So, everybody ready to go? Good evening, everyone. We're in a call to order, the December 15th, 2014 City Council meeting for the City of Stillwater. And tonight, we are honored to, we've got quite a special treat. I appreciate you guys being here. We have got the Stillwater High School Corral that will be leading us into Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will be hearing some Christmas songs. All right, Corral, release in Pledge of Allegiance.
If you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe see them. The Corral's now going to give us their rendition of Carol of the Bells. And as I understand it, that Ms. Ayers is not with us tonight because she is there putting final touches on the concert that you guys are having tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, you guys are able, you were here, you're gonna perform for us, and you're racing back to the concert. So, anyway, we greatly appreciate you guys being here.
(singing) All carol bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Doe cares away, Christmas is here, bringing good cheer to young and old, big and the bold, ding dong dong dong, glad is the sound, with joyful ring, all caroling." One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air, all they come praising the sound, or in the dell telling their tale, gale in the rain, while people sing song of good cheer, Christmas is here, ding. (singing) Merry, merry, merry Christmas, ding, merry, merry, merry Christmas. Dawn on this land, dawn without end, their joyful tone to every home. All carol bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, "Doe cares away, Christmas is here, bringing good cheer to young and old, big and the bold, ding dong dong dong, glad is the sound, with joyful ring, all caroling. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air, all they come praising the sound, or in the dell telling their tale, gale in the rain, while people sing song of good cheer, Christmas is here, ding. Merry, merry, merry Christmas, ding, merry, merry, merry Christmas. Dawn on this land, dawn without end, their joyful tone to every home. Ding dong ding dong.
Thank you guys very, thank you guys very much. And real quickly, and we'll just do it real fast, if you guys would start, introduce yourselves for us.
Hi, I'm Emily Nelson.
I'm Kitis Becker.
I'm Hannah Fugit.
I'm Gavin Guthrie.
I'm Nicholas Miller.
Tyler Swimm.
Benjamin Gates.
Garrett Briscoe.
Karen Kaser.
Nicole Kimmich.
Zoe Tingler.
Kyla Davis.
Perfect. Thank you guys very much. That was very impressive, and that's such a great example of the talent we have in our schools. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 sorry, gang, gang, sorry. One more thing, got a little thank you to get for you.
(laughing). Aww, that's so kind of you.
We've got white chocolate and dark chocolate. (inaudible).
Thank you so much.
Want a baker?
Yeah. All right, let's see, what baker do you guys?
Okay.
Thank you very much. You can get one. I got, I gotta go, cows. You guys wanna come back over here?
Guys, like, hold up for chocolate, be like, yes.
We were right, we were about to.
Oh, come on in.
Let's see, which one doesn't belong?
All right, ready, one, two, three, few more, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Thanks, Blake.
Thanks so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I think it's gonna be tough to top that, so I would immediately move for adjournment. There was not a second, so we'll move on to the consent docket. On the consent docket, we did have four items. Is there any wish to remove anything from the consent docket? Most to approve. Second. We have a motion, a second to approve the consent docket. That is approved five to zero, and I do appreciate you stating the motion and not singing the motion. That was much appreciated. All right, we do not have anything.
Are we supposed to sing the whole?
No, I do not want you to sing the motion. Okay, we had nothing removed from the consent docket, and no public comments, okay. And that takes us down to general orders, and our first item is some amendment and restatement of the trust indenture for the Stillwater Medical Center authority. Mr. Moller, hello.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and esteemed staff. Thank you for allowing me some time to present some proposed changes to the trust indenture. That's, of course, our founding document, and has not been modified in many years. Although, we've been working on these particular changes for, well, John Dorn wasn't gray at the time when we started. There were a couple of reasons we delayed it. One was, a change would, is required of the bond council, approval is required if we have bonds, and so, because we were going to refund them, we waited, and there are a couple of other reasons. But, in fact, I was here earlier to refund those bonds, to get your permission to do that. And, so, let's just get to the changes, then. And there were four, there was a lot of housekeeping and cleanup changes, and the statutes changed a little bit, the numbers, but there are four large changes. And one is making the medical staff representative an ex officio, non-voting. We need a member of the medical staff appointed to the board by the City Council. However, state trust law says that you cannot be a trustee and be an employee. Because we employ so many of our physicians, particularly almost all of our admitting physicians, that narrowed the pool almost to zero. And so, we would like to make a, make that representative ex officio, non-voting. The other change is a nominating committee made up of equal members of trust members, or city councils, and board members. And then, if they don't come up with a good slate, then the mayor will present the nominees. But, healthcare is getting more complicated, it's gonna be more challenging in the future. We would like to be able to suggest some nominees to vet some, vet some people for, for the City Council. The, for instance, information technology is beginning to be huge. We will have electronic health record, both in the clinic, clinics in the hospital. We may want to suggest someone that, that has expertise in that. The OSU has a Center for Healthcare Innovation, which has several members that could be of extreme benefit to our board. So, that's why we would like to be able to suggest some people that has expertise that we may need in the future. Third change is the City Council getting unrestricted access to our financial records. Really, you have that now, but a former councilman kinda wanted that clarified, and so, no problem with us. The final change is about indebtedness. Right now, the trust states that any indebtedness that's in excess of 5% of our existing indebtedness has to be approved by the City Council. Very shortly, we won't have any indebtedness at all, and so, if we ever wanted to go to, to the, wanted to go to the outside for some debt, we would have to come back here, even a very small portion. We don't see that in the future, immediate future, but five, 10 years from now, it could be possible. So, we, we've asked that, that the clause be changed to in excess of 5% of the greater of the existing total indebtedness, or the value of all of our assets. So, that's a provision made possible by the, by the state statute on trust. And so, we wanted to add that, so that we thought that was reasonable, and because it, we may want to get some debt later on. So, those are the, primarily, the four changes. So, are there any questions about any of those?
Council, you have any questions, Mr. Moller?
Thank you for explaining that, and email form two as well. Appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Now, Mr. Dorman, I guess procedurally, would we vote at this point, or?
You'll actually, you can direct us to bring back a resolution that will actually adopt the amendments to the trust, and it'll actually have to be passed by the hospital board and this board. So, I contacted Mr. Moller, and I think we were looking at the first meeting in January, you having the resolution, if you chose to go that way.
All right, so, I guess there are any, is that what we, we wanted them to bring back a resolution adopting these changes? Is that what we're supposed to do?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm, I'm gonna go see the Stillwater Corral, so hopefully we can get to you.
Thank you.
The one note I'd like, like to add on that is that these have been talked through at the hospital board meeting several times, and I am, I am in agreement with these changes. They do make the hospital, I think, to be able to operate more efficiently, more effectively. He kinda undersold the need for a doctor on the board, but hard getting them, because so many are employed. And so, it is very critical that we maintain a doctor on the board to provide that information that the doctors can't provide when making those type of decisions. So, it's a, the changes are very good.
Okay. All right, that's gonna take us down to our next item under general orders, is the introduction to the Form-Based Code. Ms. Dennison.
Good evening, Paula Dennison with Development Services, and I would just like to introduce the council and any of our viewing audience to Form-Based Code. There are a number of different styles of zoning application throughout the country. Form-Based Code is not exactly new, but it's not on the tip of everyone's tongue. There are about 400 communities across the US that have adopted Form-Based Code. Tulsa has adopted Form-Based Code for their Pearl District, and the City of Norman is currently working on Form-Based Code for an area immediately adjacent to campus. Our current zoning is more along the lines of the conventional zoning. The terminology is Euclidean zoning, and that's the current zoning that we utilize. And it tends to look about like what the conventional zoning does on the screen. Next to it, the zoning design guidelines, that's more in line of what we have in our business improvement district, because there are additional amenities and expectations in the bid. What Form-Based Code does is takes it a step further, and it deals with form, function, and feel. As you can see on the screen, our current zoning, the Euclidean zoning, conventional zoning, is mainly textual-based. Form-Based Code uses a lot of maps, it uses a lot of visuals along with the text component, and also, it deals with building form standards, that's gonna be on private development and private properties, but it also marries that to the public realm, or what all is occurring, and how it looks, and how it feels, and functions within the public spaces that we have in our The five elements of a Form-Based Code, they're very similar to our conventional zoning and site development, where we have a zoning map that specifically identifies each individual parcel, and how it's zoned, and what those uses are. There's a regulating plan under Form-Based Code. It does have the public standards and the building standards, there's an administration process, and definitions, and those are typically found in any type of zoning land use regulation. Some very important pieces of Form-Based Code to note. Under the Euclidean zoning, and I'm gonna use the actual area that we're looking at, if the council recalls, back about a year and a half ago, you adopted the corridor redevelopment plan, and that is the miniature master plan for the area immediately south and east of OSU campus. That's the area that we are, have outlined in the purple here on the screen, the only area that a citizen committee has been evaluating the application of Form-Based Codes to. But under our conventional zoning designation, we have eight different zoning districts in that area. And the zoning districts are primarily a separation of uses, and it only governs and regulates private property. There are no design guidelines nor requirements. What the Form-Based Code would do is take those eight zoning districts to three transect zones. Commonalities there, setbacks, height, uses, but it's more comprehensive and expanded at the same time from the use standpoint. Going from eight to three, it simplifies, it clarifies, and the process is administrative. There are design guidelines and requirements, and this is the same area under consideration, the eight to the three. Now, I'd just like to show you a couple of pictures, because I get a lot of stuff out of pictures seeing it. So, a couple of pictures. The first is comparative. We all know where this intersection is. The form, the function, the feel of that intersection, as opposed to directly across the street. The top picture is existing, as is the bottom picture. The bottom picture gives more of an idea of what can be achieved through the use of the Form-Based Code. There are materials landscaping, as you can read down through the list, of all of these components of the form-based, how the private property functions and feels, and is formed in relation to the public. These are opportunities for enhancement. There's a lot of stuff going on here in this picture. We have separation of uses with the elevated patio and the fence. We have the wide sidewalk, we have the lighting, we have a lot of signage, we have inviting open windows where you can see what's occurring, we have the tree to provide shade, and we actually have the outdoor seating. A lot of opportunities here, too. This, the uses in this picture are along with what Form-Based Code encourages, but there's also opportunities for bicycle parking, instead of just laying your bike, motorcycle parking, a fountain, create more of a place, and we've all heard the term placemaking, create more of a place in the common area here, and signage and/or windows along the second story. Here's a couple of pictures of how you can achieve the same thing, but in different manner. There's separation, there's safety issues between the building and the pedestrian and the vehicular traffic. In the top, the separation is going to be in landscaping and a wider distance between the sidewalk and the back of curb. In the bottom, the landscaping is on the other side of the sidewalk, however, it's visual and a feel, when you start getting closer to the edge of the curb, it transitions, and you can tell that something different is happening there. You still have the same effect of the shade, lighting, safety, and separation. This is a good example of one of the things that Form-Based will encourage that our current zoning really does not, and that is options, alternatives, and creativity in the design of what's happening, private and public. We have a lot of things going on in this community, and sometimes, all it takes is a good walking around with the camera, and stopping, and figuring out, and seeing, and taking a look at what's happening. We have very inviting places in our community. These are right along the lines of Form-Based Code with the colors, with the pedestrian focus instead of the vehicular focus. There's landscaping, there's benches, very inviting, and it also gives feel of community in each one of these pictures. And we have some comparatives, again, wide separation, massive expanse of a parking lot, no landscaping, no cooling effect for the vehicles that are parked there. In the lower picture, this parking lot is actually at the rear of the building, so the buildings face the street, and if you're on the entrance to the parking lot street, all you see is what looks like a simple, single residential driveway, because of the landscaping and the screening that is occurring, but you get inside and you see this parking lot. It's hidden, it's one of those little hidden places. This area, you won't recognize it right now in this picture, it is the city-owned parking lot just to the north of Fuzzy's Tacos on the strip. One of the things about Form-Based Code is taking the public and the private and creating a place or a destination. And with some of the tools that staff has, we just threw together this to show what one small piece of property, what kind of place and destination could be created in the vicinity. And again, it lends itself to pedestrian and other modes of transportation, not just the vehicle, as so many of our zoning codes are so inclined today. Now, here's a treat that I really like. An aerial view of Washington and Fourth. So, we did the same thing as on the previous slide, sort of dressed it up a little bit, seeing what it would look like, how it could function, and the form and the feel of converting it to a form-based intersection. And this is what we have. Notice the intensity of the buildings? We already have buildings right up along the right-of-way line, but the street is changing. Wider sidewalks, more landscaping, places for people to congregate, different means and methods of moving in that entire area. So, it, even just looking at a picture, it feels quite different from what we have out there now. And another, this again is Fourth Avenue, looking eastward from Washington, to have the same. And these, if you will notice, and if you recall, Dan Burden, when he was here and gave Complete Streets introduction, he was talking about the variety of modes of transportation and cycle tracks or bike tracks, and that's what these are, that are running between the sidewalk and the parking spaces, and the parking spaces are between the cycle tracks and the actual vehicle-through lanes. So, Complete Streets is a very complementary street form that matches up with the Form-Based Code, which is the zoning component. So, one of the things we have done is we've also taken a look at all of the streets in the corridor redevelopment plan area, and we have identified those based on their existing rights-of-way, and what all could occur within those rights-of-way, without having to go out and purchase additional right-of-way or anything to implement any of the Form-Based Code. And we have identified the different streets, we have different schedules for the amenities on each one of those streets. I do not have all those here this evening, because this is just a general overview introduction. Be happy to share any of that with any of you as we progress. And again, our regulating plan, taking it from eight zoning districts to the three transect zones for this area. So, part of discussion, I'll be happy, that was really short. This is a Form-Based Code, there's a lot to it. It's a massive shift in the way we conduct business, the way cities conduct business. There has been a citizen committee, there is a citizen committee, that we have utilized through master plans, corridor redevelopment plan, working with Dr. Peake on the Complete Streets, and they're also working with staff on Form-Based Code. They have been instrumental and very excited in keeping staff ready to go and wanting to present this introduction of Form-Based Code to the council. So, one of the discussion points, I would love for y'all to give us a thumbs up for us to start drafting an ordinance to replace the eight zoning districts that we have in the corridor redevelopment plan area.
And actually, it was gonna be my main question to you, is that, in the concept and the talking of Form-Based Codes, we're not talking about wiping out our entire zoning code and putting Form-Based Code citywide. We are looking at a specific area right now, is that correct?
Yes, sir, just this area. And one of the reasons that we chose this area, and we ran it by our citizen committee that we have also, is because you go anywhere else in the City of Stillwater, and you will find primarily residential uses of differing levels and densities, or commercial uses or industrial uses. Rarely will you find any one place that practically has everything happening at that place, and that's in our corridor redevelopment area. We think it'd be a great test run.
Is there any questions or comments? Because I know it's one of those, I, I know you've only given us a scratch of the surface, but it's really that next step that's gonna be so critical, the how do we implement, what are those building standards, what are those public standards?
Yes.
That, that's really where the, where the details and are gonna hit, and I appreciate that. But, I mean, I, I would really like to see what you guys can come up with on that, because conceptually, I love this idea. Details are gonna tell us if we really like the idea, and it's something, something that we can't implement.
Yes, and we'll be more than happy to polish those. We still have a couple of things that we need to run by the citizen committee for them to actually make a recommendation on how to handle some things.
Is there anyone?
I'm, happened to be on the citizen committee before I was on City Council, and I absolutely feel passionate about the idea of using Form-Based Codes where there are, where there can be effective, efficient. They're so interesting, it's just something really fresh and a wonderful way to get a mixture of uses, a mixture of people, a mixture of things to do in one place, and what an ideal connection between campus and the city. It's, it's really, I hate to say cutting-edge, it's kind of a cliche, but it is, and it, and it would really ratchet up the idea of Stillwater in, in the world's mind.
We think so, we're excited about it, staff and our citizen committee.
Well, it's what we had in mind when we, for years, we were talking about that university connection to downtown, and this gives you one of the, a tool that helps make that happen, so, yeah. I wish it were cutting-edge, it's, you can see it in other university towns where they've implemented similar kind of planning, and I'd, I'd like to see us move in that direction. I'm like you, I don't think it would fit citywide, but in an area where there's gonna be multiple mixed use, this is, this is exactly the place.
I like the bicycle, especially around campus.
You good?
I'm good, yeah, it's definitely new. I wasn't on council when I think this was first brought up, obviously, so, it's new to me, but I think it's, it's exciting, it kinda reminds me of, and I may be going down the wrong track, but it reminds me of what the university has done on Monroe, kind of, with the new, more walkability, shutting it down, paved, inviting, even, I guess even has redone right there in library to, down to Monroe, whatever that's called, so.
The legacy walk.
Yes, yeah. So, I think it's, is that kinda what it would be?
Yes, very much so, along those lines.
Yeah, that's.
Not as vehicular-focused.
Yeah.
Now, what I heard was five people saying, "Yes, get the details and, and come back." Is that, is that fair?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we will, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. That's gonna take us down to resolutions, and we have Resolution CC 2014-16, Resolution of the Mayor to sign issue an election proclamation calling for primary and general election for the City of Stillwater, so this is establishing the election dates for the mayor election in spring of next year. Move approval. Thank you. We have a motion and a second on resolution. We have a motion and a second on Resolution CC 2014-16. That's approved five to zero. It takes down to ordinances, and we have all these ordinances on first reading that were coming out of our public hearings last week. So, Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance 3288, an ordinance closing utility easement at property addressed as 711 West Fourth Avenue and 402 South Hester Street.
Any questions on this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second on ordinance 3288. It's approved five to zero, and ordinance 3289. Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance rezoning attractive land commonly known as the Lakeview Ridge Edition, first section, second section, third section, and fourth section, from RTM two-family and multifamily residential district to RSS small-lot, single-family residential district.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second on 3289. It's approved five to zero, and ordinance 3290.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 2123 West 12th Avenue from RSS small-lot, single-family residential district and a agriculture district to RSS small-lot, single-family residential district.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve 3290. It's approved five to zero, and takes down to 3291.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 101 North Jardoe Road from RSS small-lot, single-family residential district and a agricultural district to RSS small-lot, single-family residential district.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second on 3291. Approved five to zero, and our last ordinance on first reading is ordinance 3292.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 202 South Fresh Creek Road from RSS small-lot, single-family residential district to a agriculture district.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion a second on 3292. It's approved five to zero, and on second reading, we have ordinance 3287.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 999 West 12th Avenue from RSS small-lot, single-family residential district and a agriculture district to O Office District.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second on 3287 on second reading. That is approved five to zero. It's gonna take us down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
One item tonight, sir. Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B4 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding pending litigation Weaver versus the City of Stillwater, Et Al, United States District Court, Western District of Oklahoma. It is my opinion that public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to defend this pending litigation or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all, sir.
Galloway?
Nothing further this evening.
Okay. Counselors, you have anything?
I do. I have one. I was quite surprised and disappointed in the public representation at the Raftellus public meeting, and I really do believe that if we are serious about getting public input on these items, that we have to be serious about it. And one person at that meeting was kind of, it just isn't enough. It's not public input, and I'm wondering if we can, you know, there are, I understand there, I mean, I think that there's probably a continuum of things that we could do, and I know there is another public meeting scheduled in January. I would like to have a discussion at the next meeting or some, at some time, on how we make sure that we get input from the public. Yes, there was some effort to advertise this. Obviously, not enough. And I think that, you know, we think, well, you know, the city, the public just doesn't care. I don't think that that's really true when we have two things that, in just recent memory, the slice of Stillwater survey that we had, what, 2,000 responses to? What was the other one? It was a really good example.
Oh, the group I worked with, it was a small group, but it was some input, slices to work.
People will come and they will respond if they know about things, and so to have either Raftellus come back, Raftellus to present this in a way that can be put online so people can have some idea of how water rates, I mean, the hour that we spent with them was so informative on the various factors that affect water rates, water usage, and I mean, that's equally as important as, as the feedback from the public, just the education. So, you know, the continuum of whether they come back and do another public input meeting, figure out some way to do it through the newspaper, through online, some type of other media-type thing, or at the very least, I would like to see a definite plan of how that second public meeting, I would like to see exactly how that is going to be advertised.
To the city attorney, I, you know, we've had a couple of private conversations about what options we might have to set ordinance in place to restrict how close the drilling operation can be to a residential neighborhood. I'd like you to explore that and give us some options for what we might do as far as setbacks for how far rigs can be to a residential neighborhood in Stillwater.
Yes, sir. All right. Y'all have anything? I know we can't get into the discussion, but I do appreciate what you're saying on the notice. One thing, and it's actually, I'm gonna tie two things together here. One, we will be, we will be canceling the December 22 study session, but I would like for us to be looking at the January study session. I would like for it to include part of this question. I think there are some other things we can work into it, but I think this question can be, definitely be one of those in the big picture that we need to be delving into to determine what is that appropriate method of dispersing information, and at what point can, we've, we've shared as much as we can share, and then the burden's on the public. And we need to figure out where on that continuum, where on that spectrum we feel like we are, what is reasonable, what is not. And so I do think more discussion is warranted. The other item that I have is radio schedule tomorrow morning. I'm showing Council Darlington.
I think that's right.
On, on radio, KSBI 780 AM at 8:15, and then I will be on triple play on Wednesday at 7 o'clock. So, okay. Kind of meshed that and the discussion of future meeting items together. Does anybody have anything else for future meetings, shared tonight? It's gonna take us down to appointments, and on Planning Commission, we have an open spot on Planning Commission, and I would nominate Rick Creziak to fill the, is it appoint, is it complete a term? I can't remember where we were. Is it just, complete a term, complete the term, the open seat on Planning Commission?
It's a whole term.
Whole term. Whole term, okay.
Second.
And motion a second on Mr. Creziak. That is approved five to zero. Okay, we're gonna recess city council, and then we'll be coming back to take up the executive session. But I'm gonna call to order the utility authorities meeting for December 15, 2014. And there are three items on the consent docket. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion a second to approve the consent docket. That's approved five to zero. It takes down to general orders. Smith, hello.
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Generation and Transmission Division Manager. Tonight's meeting with an update on the power generation station project. At this point, we are on schedule and under budget, which is good news. A big part of keeping us, the project on schedule at this point is the releasing of the many bids required to procure all of the equipment for the project. They are being released at a rate of approximately three per week. Some of these bids range from 300 to 1,000 pages, and they're very complex. So, a lot of time has been spent to carefully get those out, make sure that they're correct. The engine generator sets have been ordered. The transformer contracts are being finalized, as well as site development and layout. The air permit is under review with ODEQ. The natural gas pipeline negotiations are underway, as well as the waterline extension project. The administration building designs have been completed, and lastly, the substation design has been completed. During the design phase of the substation project, staff identified two transmission line projects that were on the 20-year capital improvement plan that would be beneficial to complete prior to bringing the new power generation station online. The two projects will increase reliability of the transmission system and more effectively manage the power output from the power generation station. The projects will allow the new power generation station to connect to the transmission system at more than one point, will permit sections of the transmission system to be rapidly isolated in order to better contain electrical problems, will reduce customer outage sizes and duration times, and will also provide a second power feed into industrial substation, thereby increasing electric service reliability to our industrial and residential customers fed out of that substation. I'm here to request authorization to execute two amendments to the professional service agreement with Burns &amp; McDonnell for the power generation station project. The two scopes of work are for the engineering design services needed to perform the transmission system modifications and to expand the transmission side of industrial substation. While the engineering for both transmission system projects will be performed by Burns &amp; McDonnell, the procurement of the materials and the construction work will be performed by Stillwater Electric Utility Staff for a significant cost savings over a turnkey project. The funds required for the engineering design services for the both projects will come from the Electric Rate Stabilization Fund. My recommendation to you tonight is to, one, authorize staff to execute an amendment to the professional service agreement with Burns &amp; McDonnell in the amount of $115,000 and authorize expenditures from the electric RSF up to $120,750 for the engineering design services needed to perform the transmission system modifications. And, two, authorize staff to execute an amendment to the professional service agreement with Burns &amp; McDonnell in the amount of $164,000 and authorize expenditures from the electric RSF up to $172,200 for the engineering design services needed to expand the transmission side of industrial substation. Both of those included a 5% contingency off of the base cost. So with that, I will open the floor to any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. So you're looking for, staff's recommendation is to approve?
Those two amendments.
Those two amendments to the contract.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to accept staff's recommendation?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And that's approved five to zero. There'll be nothing further on the SUA agenda, is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
Motion to adjourn SUA.
Second.
That's approved five to zero. SUA is adjourned. I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for December 15, 2014. Two items on the consent docket. Does anybody wish to remove either of those items?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion a second to approve consent docket. That's approved five to zero, and that's gonna take us down under general orders. Proposed plan of work for the contract with Red Dirt DMO. Mr. Galloway?
Okay. You recall on, first meeting in November, November the 3rd, we approved, you approved, CETA approved, a contract with Red Dirt DMO to conduct the visitor and tourist marketing function for the city under contract. That contract's scheduled to start January 1. The contract had the general scope of services, and it referenced a plan of work, which is the detailed allocation of the costs with the performance criteria and all of those. John McClain is our project manager on that. He's been working with the chairman of Red Dirt DMO, Mr. Doug Emde, who's in the audience tonight, and I think Kristi Morrison's been kind of helping on both sides in getting this worked out. The final document that was worked out is included in your packet and is waiting for approval of CETA. With approval of CETA, then we'll be completely set to switch to a private contract operation beginning January 1. And so, that's before you this evening, and it's presented and recommended for approval.
And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion a second to approve the plan of work. That's approved five to zero.
Thank you.
Nothing further on the SUA agenda, is there a motion to, uh, SUA, CETA, excuse me?
CETA.
Is there a motion to adjourn CETA?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Approved five to zero. CETA is adjourned. We will reconvene at the city council meeting, and there is a request to go to executive session on the item stated earlier. Is there such a motion to move to executive session?
Make a motion to move to executive session.
Second.
I'm gonna vote no one of these terms.
And that motion is approved.